I'm Marcia Herbert, President of the Carroll County School Board, and I welcome you to a work session on academic recovery, compensatory and extended year services evaluation, and also tutoring and supplemental instruction, extended learning opportunities fall of 2021. And then we will also talk about policy development discussion regarding politically neutral stance and COVID dashboard. Dr. Lockard, you may take it away.
Thank you, President Herbert. Good evening, everybody. We have about two hours for several topics, and we'll get started right away. We're going to, as promised, provide a review of the summer academic recovery program, compensatory services, and the evaluation of that. So Mr. Anderson and team is also going to then get into the tutoring and supplemental instruction that starts next week. So provide the board the update from the summer and the metrics associated with that, as well as looking ahead to the supports we have in place. So, Mr. Anderson.
We're going first?
Yes. Sorry. We have Mr. Alisakis, Mr. Shakni, Ms. Jones.
Good afternoon, board members. I am pleased to be joined with Jeff Alisakis, who's on my left, who is our supervisor of teacher and leadership development. Mr. Shakni, also on my right, who is our director of special education. It's a pleasure to be here today. I want to start off by thanking, if I may, the school directors for their outstanding work that they did to facilitate this process, as I refer to summer recovery. When you open up your purple folders on the left, you'll see a handout, the report, if you will, for academic recovery, compensatory and extended school year services. And then on the right, which we will get to afterwards, I ask you just to keep that there. There you will find the actual copy of the tutoring and supplemental instructional instruction, extended learning opportunities that we are, as Dr. Lockard said, starting Tuesday of next week. It's pretty exciting. We're 11 days into instruction this year, and we already have our supplemental services that are going to be in place and started. So we'll get to that part. So if I may, direct your attention to the academic recovery compensatory services evaluation. I also would like to give a shout out to all the different departments within the organization that made this possible. As you all are aware, each month last year, I came to the board with an update of our planning. That plan grew significantly. It is a cross-departmental, divisional program plan that incorporated not only our academic or instructional programming, but it also included very important pieces of making sure that our operations team was able to clean the buildings, making sure the buildings were in good standing for our students. This was the first time we brought students back for five days a week without masks. I mean, this was a huge success that in itself. We also provided meals to our students, breakfast and lunch every single day, and transportation for our students. Again, major successes across the board. I also want to give a special thank you to our front office staff at all the buildings and the magnet sites where this was held. We had 21 different magnet sites where this programming was taking place, and that front office staff did amazing, an amazing amount of work. They did the work. In some cases, there were five different buildings feeding into one. That's a lot of work. It's a lot of coordination, and I just have to publicly thank all of them for that. And then obviously, our administrators, as always, did an outstanding job of doing their best to make sure that we were able to provide and collect adequate metrics to make sure that we're able to report to you today. So if you go ahead and open up the document, what I'd like to do is spend a couple minutes just once again reminding you of the overview. Again, it was five days a week. We conducted pre and post assessments to make sure that we could look at the efficacy of our instructional programming. We also wanted to make sure that we reminded the board that this was the first time, board members, that we were not, that we were actually offering a true summer learning experience at this magnitude in a very, very long time. From what I understand that history has taught, has shared with me is that we once at one point did have a summer school that was going on. It was one of the things that was put on the back burner because of the cuts that had taken place the years past. So this was a great opportunity, once again, to provide that learning experience throughout the summer to keep our kids moving forward. And I also wanted just to remind the board members again that without the collaboration of this entire school system, the 21 sites that held this five-week experience would not have been possible. Participation, once again, as I shared with you before, we had nearly 4,000 students, board members, that attended this opportunity. That is a conglomerate of general ed students, students that have an IUP that were actually receiving compensatory services as a result of the distance learning that we were all exposed to over the past 16 months, as well as the extended school year services that also are with our students with disabilities. Overall, what we're going to be prepared to share with you today in just a minute, Mr. Alisakis is going to spend a few minutes, sharing the metrics, the important metrics, the salient pieces as it relates to attendance of those students that had committed to come over the summer, as well as the performance of our students. We know that we invested heavily into this effort, and we are prepared today to illustrate what I feel is extremely very positive results as we implemented this program over the summer. So are there any questions or anything in specifics before we get into the metrics that I can answer?
I would just like to thank you for acknowledging the hard work of everyone who helped to pull this together because it is, you know, it was quite a task. And when you mentioned the front office staff, I certainly was pleased to hear that as well because I, as I had mentioned at one of our board meetings, had the opportunity to attend the session at William Winchester. And, you know, I heard firsthand some of the situations that the front office staff had to deal with. So again, that was in addition to their regular requirements as well. So again, just thanks for giving a shout out for all those people who helped to make it possible.
Yeah, once a principle, always a principle. Dr. Dorsey, you know how important those folks are. And they did amazing work. As I said, that was one of the buildings where we had four or five different schools feeding in into that school. So if, as we look to continue to plan, we're going to talk about the implications, and that was one of the pieces that I'm going to be bringing up on how we can remedy some of those concerns and challenges.
And as you mentioned, that school did have several schools feeding into that particular program.
They did.
And on the one day that I visited, that was the day that a number of those administrators, school administrators, had come to just sort of see what their students were doing. So, you know, it was just very important for them to be touching base and seeing their students participating.
No doubt, no doubt. Okay. At this time, board members, if you could turn to page number three. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Alisakis, who I want to commend as well, who's done amazing work with our technology team. Jen Seashell and her team have been magnificent in regards to making sure that we're pulling the appropriate metrics to be able to best illustrate our services over the summer. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Good evening, board members, Dr. Lockard. I'd like to take you through the document and talk to you about the highlights and the accomplishments that we made during summer, during our summer recovery program. So table one, I think the first piece we need to talk about is attendance before we get into achievement. So when we look at that, we had about 50% of those who were invited actually attended. So invited means that the school went in, and they checked a little box in E-School Plus and said, hey, you guys are invited to attend. Of those that were invited, 85% of those that said they would participate. And that means the parent came back and said, yes, we're in. We're going to do summer recovery. 85% of those students actually attended summer recovery. So we had actually pretty high numbers there coming in. So we're very excited about that. When we look at how, okay, so for the students who actually attended, okay, and we based attended on if they had a post-assessment score or they had no, an absence value not equal to 24, meaning they were there because we had no other way to track their attendance because we weren't keeping that in E-School Plus. So if they had either one of those qualifiers, we counted them as coming to summer recovery. So when we look at the data moving forward, that's what that's going to look at. And we look at the first, table two. When we look at table two, the highlights there are 50 to 60% or more of those who attended missed less than one week. And when we look at missing less than two weeks, that number goes up to 70 to 80%, depending upon the level. Quite an accomplishment, again, showing the commitment of the students and their parents that actually said that, hey, they were going to come to summer recovery. They came, okay, and they participated. So we had very good metrics on attendance. When we go to table three on page four, we start to break it down a little bit by demographics, and we start to look at, okay, how did different student groups respond to summer recovery? I think the highlights, when we look at table three overall for the system, 70%, and when we think about our underserved students, our underrepresented students, 70% of our ESOL students attended, 61% of our Hispanic, and 58% of our special ed students. So again, quite high numbers in those that came in our underrepresented student populations. The same, you'll see the same basic trends in demographics in table four. We had very strong participation in elementary school. Table four just breaks out the data by school level. ESOL, Hispanic and special ed, again, very high achievement levels. And then when we go to table five, the trend continues there. And we see the same sort of numbers with the underrepresented student population.
So Jeff, let me chime in here. And so Brenda, if you could go ahead and pull it up. One of the, one of the most important pieces of the summer recovery and what we were held accountable for is to make sure that we were able to measure the progress of students as a result of this. And so it was imperative that we had a pre and post-assessment done. In full transparency, you know, did we get every single post-assessment back? No, we did not for every single student that attended. Lots of reasons for that. I see the educators shaking their heads of how difficult that is. A lot of it was students weren't there for the post-assessment. Sometimes they, you know, we just didn't get the data back from that particular teacher. So there's a lot of pieces there that we have a plan for on how we're going to remedy that as we move forward next year. But what we wanted to really highlight because, you know, we've invested heavily also in the data dashboard. On your screen right now is the actual, an example of the Performance Matters data dashboard, which we're going to be using as we move forward, as we look at local as well as state metrics to drive our instruction. And so as Jeff takes it back over and talks about table number six, we want to go ahead and illustrate also of where teachers can find this pre and post-assessment data this year so that if they had a student that took advantage of summer recovery, they'll have a clear picture on how well those students did. And it's pretty amazing to see how well those students did. So Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Anderson. So if you look at the screens, I had the pleasure of working with the elementary principals on Monday. Mr. Wernick invited me to their meeting, and this is one of the things we highlighted because we know it's extremely relevant right now as we look at our metrics and the most recent metrics. So Brenda, if you would please click on reports, and then from reports, if we click on that there, it loads up. There we go. There we go. And then if you click on baseball card report, please. And then there's a folder midway down on the left called Other Metrics. If you would please click on that. And then on the very bottom, you'll see if, and this is how easy it is for our teachers and our administrators to get there. You'll see a folder called Summer Recovery. And of course, we only have one year of summer recovery data, so there's a 2021 school year. And if you click on that, please. And we'll just take a quick look at elementary math. And Brenda, if you would please click on elementary math and click both those boxes there. Thank you.
Jeff, the two boxes that they're clicking right now, that's the pre and the post, correct?
That's correct. That's the pre-recovery data and the post-recovery data. And then Brenda, if you would go to the second column over there, yes, and then click on that white box there, and then hit Apply Swatching. I think the board is going to be very excited to see these, see this data. So now we're just filtering out anybody who didn't have a value in the system. And if you just scroll down a little bit. The piece I really want to highlight there, if you want to keep going a little bit more so we can see it, look at all the red in the first column. The red represents the pre-assessment data. Our red, obviously not being very good in our color squatching sequence. But when you look to the second column, look at how the colors change from green to blue, a lot of them. And we have some yellows in there, and of course, we have some reds. But you can see the color change showing the impact that summer recovery had in this particular assessment, this, the math elementary assessment. So it's a very easy way for teachers to get a quick optics of the impact of it. And again, you know, when I've done this, when I've talked to you before about Performance Matters, teachers, of course, would only see their students. Schools would only see the students in their schools, et cetera. We're seeing district level. This is from a district level here, but it's quite impactful.
Yeah, so essentially, this type of reporting that we can do now, teachers can do in their classroom at their fingertips, is compiled and now it has, which is in front of you. But I wanted to let you know that we can begin to bring this down to a more granular level for our instructors to be able to see how kids are doing, how they did this summer, as well as just a whole mess full of assessments that they've taken in the past as well. Okay?
Yeah, I was just going to quickly say, I appreciate you illustrating the data this way because one of the things that we've heard from teachers and principals is they want that access, and they want it without having to ask somebody, can you run this for me? Can you get this for me? So here it is. And without getting into a whole nother work session, there's all sorts of things behind these numbers that teachers can look at. Which questions did students struggle with?
Correct.
What was the item analysis? So I can focus on that standard in my classroom right now to support that student. So lots of good stuff there.
So in the interest of time, Jeff, I'd like you to go ahead and go through the tables to show.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can I just ask a couple of questions? I mean, this is really great. I just want to make sure I understand what we're looking at. So are these like de-identified students on the left? So these are all, each individual line is a different student?
That's correct. And then your first, where you see a lot of red, that was the pre-assessment. So we were accurately representing or identifying students that were struggling, obviously academically, right? Because when we gave them the pre-assessment before the school year was out last year, remember, we had a, we had a window of time where we had to give them a pre-assessment because they were identified by the schools. There's their pre-assessment score. Red, obviously, is, you know, needs help, right? And then you see the post-assessment, which is on the right, and you can see the growth. So basically, you're lining them up next to each other to see how the students did. Some students, obviously, the majority of our students made progress, but there's a number of students that made considerable significant progress. There's some students that made progress, but there's still the concern.
They're still in the red, so to speak.
That's correct. And we're going to, and those are the types of students that would probably be recommended still for this fall extended learning opportunity.
And how do you define significant improvement?
That's where we're going next.
Okay.
Jeff?
Okay, but before you go, before you go, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
One being, at one point, Mr. Anderson, I thought you said that you had some missing student data because you couldn't track the teachers down. Did the teachers input the data?
So basically, it wasn't I couldn't track the teachers down. It was just in some situations, we didn't get a full report. Some of those situations, the students, what I'm hearing is that the students were, perhaps weren't there for the, for the post-assessment.
Okay, I can understand that piece. Okay, and they submitted the data through the computer?
Correct. And it may have been, well, they submitted the data. So that's a, that's a great point. That's where we're going.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so our implication will rather, our recommendations as we move forward, we've been working with the directors, and what we'd like to do is work more through E-School in the future. I want to remind the board, this was like, we were, we were moving at a rapid pace, putting all this together. And so, and a lot of the kids weren't even in the school last year at the end of the year. So what we, what we did is we put, we did our best effort to make sure that we had databases, if you will. I mean, I know it's a bit antiquated to think about, but we had databases where we asked people to fill them out, right? And so sometimes with that comes human error. What we're intending to do, which I'll get to recommendations at the end of the report, is that we have an activity or a class in E-School where that data is more, I guess, is more consistently input and as well as, we'll be able to retrieve it.
Okay, and I have one more question, like concerning, I guess we would call them cut scores, but looking at the students,
The color swatches.
Yeah, who remained red. How close were they to becoming the green?
To the cut score?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where we're going next in regards to our significant growth or average growth.
And just one last one. So something like, there's one line there that was green in the pre-assessment. So why would that particular individual have been invited?
Why? It could have been that maybe the student was disengaged throughout the year. It could have been that maybe the performance that we saw, the teacher saw throughout the school year, I mean, wasn't, wasn't, they didn't anticipate seeing a green. You're not going to see a lot of green.
Okay, no, I was just curious because they...
If I can also add to that, the one, the one piece that you, you're seeing green for, this is only elementary math. If you look to the left, there's all the other, all the other assessments. That student may have scored red in some of the other assessments, but also we tested them in this because they were coming anyway. So that could be one of the reasons that we're seeing that data.
Got it.
Another example, maybe, we had our students with disabilities who participated in either ESY or special education recovery compensatory also participated in Gen Ed recovery. So they may have participated in a session that may have been a strength for them, and that could be an indicator as to why also.
Yeah, but I don't think you're going to see a lot of green in the pre-assessment, you know? But there might have been a couple surprises.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you had actually used, so all of the results, you were able to look at the pre-assessments, and that's what you used to say, okay, the majority of the reds and the deepest reds?
So we did, we did, in the majority, in the most cases, we did a universal pre and post-assessment. And so, but there was still, you know, just because the student did well on that, that particular assessment, there might have been evidence throughout the school year that they just weren't engaged, or they, we still had concerns about them, right? And so the invitation still went out.
Got it.
Yep. Okay, Jeff, do you want to talk a little bit to table six and compile some of this data?
Absolutely. In the interest of time, just, just to talk about tables six, eight, and nine real quick, I just need to highlight something. So when you're looking at the percentage of growth, I need you to understand that the percentage of growth is based only on those students who had both a pre and a post score. There'd be no other way to measure that. So we have some, some places, you know, where we didn't have pre-scores for some reason, or students went on vacation at the very end of summer recovery, and we didn't get a post score. So when you look at those numbers, that's why those numbers may be a little bit different than the metrics that you're seeing in the overall, in the overall categories. So real quick for Ms. Savigny to get to your question, and you guys can read those percentages, I do want to highlight the bottom of those charts, which talks about what growth actually means. So you can see for significant growth, and if we would just stay with the elementary math, that was the one we had up there with Performance Matters. If you look at elementary math, students had to have, had to gain more than 20 points on that particular assessment. And those categories came from the content supervisors. I worked with those folks. I said, hey, what, what is significant growth? What is average growth? What is minimal growth? And you'll see those categories as we go through the packet here. And that's what they gave us. So that's where they, those have come from. So that, that's, and that's where those color bands then apply, and you can quickly see how.
So Dr. Dorsey, that's to your question. So how did the swatching take place? Basically, if we saw average growth based on what the content specialist, the expert, said as it relates to that particular assessment, then that's how we colored it.
Okay. And what is a unit? Like what is, what constitutes a point, right? Like you're saying 20 points growth, like what is it?
So when you look at, when we get down further to another table, we're going to get into, well, for example, if you look at table number seven, is that accurate, Jeff? You're looking at perfect score. Perfect score for table number seven is basically, you can see there for our primary reading inventory, you can see there a perfect score would be 26, 26 basically questions, 26 different units. As you grow on, you can see that there's actually far more, it's a, it's a far more sophisticated assessment that'll have more items.
So, and that's exactly where I was going to go, Mr. Anderson. If you just, to look at, to answer that question, star math, if you look at star math for perfect score, that was 1,400. So for significant growth, if you looked at star math, a student had to gain between 300 to 600 points to say, hey, that they made significant growth. And so you can see that isn't always a one-to-one ratio. It's based upon, you know, the assessment itself. So the highlights there, again, I think, you know, when you look at them, you can see we had substantial achievement levels. I mean, you know, when you look at the significant growth, the elementary math and the star reading, huge numbers that showed significant growth in those categories. When we pop over to, and in table seven, Mr. Anderson referenced, I think that's an interesting table just to look at because it shows the number of students who then got a perfect score. So again, that impact, the elementary math, I mean, if you look at that, we had 157 students walk out scoring a perfect score on that assessment. So it shows again that what we did and what the teachers did, more importantly, during summer recovery, had an impact on how the students achieved. The average growth, star math, again, showing some substantial growth. And then when we get to the minimal growth, one thing I wanted to talk about with the minimal growth is when you looked at assessed reading level, this is sort of deceiving in the sense, one reading level is quite an achievement, but it's tough to like measure a half a reading level or a quarter reading level. So when I worked with Ms. Dale, and I said, well, what would be minimal growth? We went with the lowest one. But one is still pretty substantial, and that's why that number's pretty high there. Where you see 40% students got one, one reading level? That's still pretty good. So I needed to talk about just how that sort of plays out. And then the no-growth. Of course, we had some students who made no-growth, and you can see those, those areas there. And again, you see that in the assessed reading level, but that doesn't mean that the student didn't learn anything because, again, just because they didn't grow a whole reading level, we didn't measure if they grew a quarter level or a half a level because that's not the way the assessment is set up. So again, when you look at those metrics, they can be a little deceiving. So again, when you look at those metrics, they can be a little deceiving. And then finally, we did add the regression piece in there, you know, for various reasons, you know, that we can't pinpoint right now, students did regress in some of the category, based upon some of the tests. The final table is the high school credit recovery table, and as you know, as Mr. Anderson has talked to you, as we talked about the setup of summer recovery, that was a totally different model on how things were done. You know, in high school, we're talking about credit recovery, we're just not talking about, you know, achievement levels on different tests. I think the metrics that Mr. King and his team provided there demonstrate that credit recovery also had a direct impact, and we had a lot of students get their credits back by working through credit recovery at the high school level.
Thanks, Jeff. Mr. Shachny, as you go through on page number nine, you can see our narration there as it relates to compensatory services and extended school year. Mr. Shachny, would you like to give a brief overview?
Sure, just a couple of key points to highlight and to echo the comments of the group earlier. Summer work with students is not new to us in special education. However, the volume of work that we did this past summer was tremendous. So a big thank you to our special educators, our related service providers, our instructional assistants. We required a lot of instructional support this summer, and then all the support that happens with our school-based teams. So again, we were able to service a lot of students over the summer. We had 60 of our 80 relatively new 11-month teachers working this summer, which was a great success for us. The other 20 are going to be working a compressed schedule after school this school year to deliver after-school recovery services. We were able to provide services, special education recovery and compensatory services to 750 students. That's in addition to the typical 300 or 50 students or so that we typically provide extended school-year services to. Of that group of 750, we were able to, about 146, about 150 students, we were able to deliver all owed compensatory services. And keep in mind, we started with our students with the greatest intensity of needs and services first. So that was a big accomplishment for us. We serviced roughly about 3,000 students with disabilities in Carroll County Public Schools. About 1,500 were eligible for recovery and compensatory services. So we were able to get a start on 750 of them this summer, and again, 150 of them we were able to complete, but we will continue to strive to work towards completing those remaining services owed. The other big celebration is over 600 of our students with disabilities participated in the general education recovery. They may be, some of those students may have also participated in one of the other two forms of special ed services this summer or not. Not every student with a disability was eligible for recovery services. So it was great that we had that partnership with our general education colleagues, that we were able to get a lot of students with disabilities participating. So that no doubt will help them with their return to instruction this year.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions, board members, for Nick?
Now, I just have a general question, okay? Because I did, in my speech to the hearing the other week, I talked to you about numbers, and I said, you know, here we are again, leading in the state, summer recovery. Now, my question on that Performance Matters is, when you open that up, are we breaking any laws, or can some people, parents, get in there and see other kids' scores or anything like that? I was just concerned because I know how people can manipulate stuff, and, you know.
Yeah, that's a school-based access-only for employees.
Right.
It's not a public-facing.
I worry about stuff like that, but you know, there's always somebody that's always trying to get ahead, and I just, you know, was very concerned about privacy on that.
It's password-protected, it's like any of our other internal programs that have student information, it's not.
But you do understand, I mean, I'm always, you know, always trying to protect our kids.
Absolutely, we're always interested in that.
Right, so, you know, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's great. I mean, because I did top that up at that state hearing, but I just thought, when I saw all that up on the board, I thought, ooh, I hope nobody cracked into that.
And the access rights, Ms. Herbert, are differentiated based on the status of the individual. So there's very few people that have total access and the rights to doing what needs to be done. Majority of teachers have access to their students, and they're the ones that are seeing their students and teaching their students, they should have access to them.
And I understand that, because when you put the grades in, you know, yeah, I was there doing that stuff, but you just don't want anybody else, you know, in there. I just worry about that.
Absolutely. And so as we look at future implications, or basically implications of what we pulled from this, is you can see there, you know, in almost every, well, in every single instructional level in all content areas, our students made significant growth. And board members, that was in five weeks. That was five weeks, five days, you know, five days a week for a half a day in the majority of the cases. In some cases, as Nick said, there were students there, they were getting general ed as well as special education services, but the majority of our students was a half day. I also want to remind the board members that general education was part of the actual programming, was, general education was augmented with EBIT, Evidence-Based Intervention Programming, which is, you know, oftentimes, I'll use an example, we've talked about Lexia, it's a tier-two intervention, that's something that teachers were familiar with, kids were familiar with, but 30 minutes need to be allocated to it. Same thing with mathematics, DreamBox was the example we were using. In addition to the general education instruction, we had to also go ahead and put an evidence-based type of intervention program into the programming as well. So we've had meetings with Lexia since then and looked at that data in particular, and we're starting to look at relationships as it relates to these individual interventions, and Nick's doing an amazing job of leading us through our MTSS RTI work, which we'll talk about in a second. So you can see the data of improvement there as it relates to pre and post. I also want to, lastly, just bring up the point that as we look for the upcoming school year, we've targeted another 600 students for fall and spring as it relates to our compensatory services. I think, Nick, we're sitting at about 300 and some now?
315.
315, so once again, that progress and that process is going. I mean, it's going the whole time. And so as we look at recommendations, Dr. Dorsey, you said, hey, Jason, how can we become better at making sure that we are collecting the data and getting the data and having, you know, this is a great sample that we're looking at and analyzing, but there are some students that we missed here, and part of it is because we have been reliant on databases and asking people to complete Excel databases and submitting us the data. And sometimes that just, we're not as successful as we could be if we set up an activity within e-school and had it all worked through there. That takes time, and once again, that falls on our administrative assistance in our schools, oftentimes registers, those types of things, and so we had to be sensitive to that. I think it was a huge success this summer, but I think we can get much better.
Can you remind us what the average class size was for most of these?
So basically, I mean, I'll look over at our directors, but I know in some places elementary, it could be as large as 12, 13 kids, but it could be as small as four or five kids, and you'll be happy about that, Ms. Herbert.
Yeah, that's my number.
But that's, I mean, it fluctuated, and so we didn't have a ratio that we had to stay with. What we were concerned about, Ms. Vigney, is getting as many students as we could, and we knew that, well, we don't, we won't have, if we had 4,000 students, we weren't going to have 1,000 teachers, you know what I mean, working? So as the more students came, the ratios naturally intuitively would have to get larger. But we wanted kids back in the school. That's what our goal was in the summer.
Mr. Anderson, I do have one thing, and I don't know if you can explain this. I see that we've got really good response on some of the high schools.
Okay, you're jumping ahead, Ms. Herbert, was what you're doing. You're on the right side of the folder.
I am, I'm just trying.
Okay, I'm going to get to that part. I'm going to get to that part. Any other questions about summer recovery?
I just, do you mind if I jump in, just like a couple, so just some observations, right? So, Nick, I mean, these are, these are great numbers of the students with growth on the special ed side. Are these, now, on the others, we broke it out like by minimal, average, significant. Is this with any growth, or?
So that data is based upon the assessments that were done in general education, that is separate from the work that we did in special education. Our work is all tied back to the individual student's IEP. When we determine eligibility for recovery compensatory services, we, there's a very detailed data analysis that happens for every student where we have a vision for a measurable amount of progress that we want students to make, and students became eligible when they didn't make that anticipated progress. So all the IEP goals are measurable. So what we did was, we set targets for each student for what we wanted to be able to accomplish, and using a very similar process for extended school year, ESY. And those students, we identify if they made sufficient progress or not. At any point in time, if a student doesn't make expected progress, we could beat an IEP team, and then we review and revise and go from there. So the accountability measure on the special education side, it's a little bit more embedded to the individual student, but it's a very, kids became eligible based upon that data analysis that happened with their measurable set of goals and their expected progress.
Right, okay. And, thank you very much, Nick. And I did have one other question on, you know, when I'm looking at the assessed reading levels, so there are a couple of different categories, right? There's assessed reading, wonders, elementary math, star reading. But if you look at the assessed reading levels for grades one, two, and three, so there's 10% of students showing significant growth, 13 showing average, but then 40 showing minimal and 28 showing no growth.
That's correct.
That would seem like, so one of the key things that we're worried about, right, is reading levels of those youngest grades, because that's what's impacted the most, we think, by virtual learning, right? So the fact that that one particular group didn't seem to have a lot of growth?
Yeah, great question, and let me further explain it. Jeff mentioned this. When we worked with Stephanie Dale, our content specialist, when you're talking about one reading level growth for grades one or two, that's significant in five weeks, right? So you're not going to see the same progress, I can see Dr. Dorsey shaking her head, you're not going to see the numbers based on that actual assessment. It's still pre and post, but you're probably not going to see the growth, the significant growth of a reader at the primary level in five weeks make a huge jump.
Okay, that makes sense. And by reading level, you're talking about going from like an E to an F.
There you go.
Okay, got it.
Or when we're looking at an inventory, we're looking at something that is synonymous to that or equated to that.
Mr. Koller?
Yeah, overall, and like you guys said, it was great kids that wanted to get in it. This, at least for this year, was voluntary, so you can't enforce attendance, you encourage it, and for the younger ones, for the ones doing it for credit, could you require attendance there? Because some of these kids are the ones that traditionally might have poor attendance begin with.
Yes, sir.
And then moving forward, if we do this next summer, can we require attendance? Or when it's voluntary, you just can't? You know, it seems like such a shame, this is a giant opportunity, and we can't make everybody take advantage of it, but somehow we got to encourage it.
Well, that's why you saw, I think, the highest attendance rates in high school, because you needed to be in attendance to get the credit. And quite honestly, when you need to get that credit to graduate, you're going to go to, you're going to get it, right? So that's pretty enforceful, right? And then you see the elementary with high attendance, right? Well, because, you know, this is a great opportunity for young kids to do something in the morning and get some support, academic support, makes perfect sense. Where we see the struggles, as we do everywhere, and this is everywhere I've been, middle school, right, is getting those kids to come on a regular basis. And so that's the struggle. No, we can't mandate it, but what we continue, try to continue to do is bring that horse to water, and hopefully they start to drink, you know?
Yeah, and there's got to be some kind of carrot we can dangle, right?
Sure, we could pay them, maybe, I don't know. Joe, yeah, so I know that we also want to keep this going because I know there's another important topic. On the right side, Ms. Herbert, where you were going, you can see our plan there for extended learning. As Dr. Lockard said, it will begin on Tuesday. A big thanks once again to our school directors, our school administrators. I mean, honestly, I don't know how they're doing, and I feel guilty always asking for things from them because they're doing all the pieces with quarantine, they're trying to keep buildings open, and quite honestly, then I'm asking them, hey, I need you guys to get this done because we need to start extended learning on next week, right? This has been an effort that's been in place since July we started meeting. This is a cumulative effort, once again, of transportation meals. Quick overview, we looked at the fourth quarter grades, once again, is one of our foundational baseline measures, because we knew a lot of kids, once again, we wanted to go back to that, to use as a consistent measure, because it was extremely inconsistent when we looked at our local assessments, as I mentioned last time in our, when we were talking about pillar one, there was a large percentage of our students that didn't take it or weren't there to take it. So we wanted to look at something that was baseline and something that we could all look at. And quite honestly, school systems across the state are doing the same thing. They're looking at their fourth quarter grade reports. And so what we plan to do is, as we implement this, we're going to look at mid-quarter, midterm grades, and then obviously the quarter grades also to see what kind of progress we're making. Once again, four to one, the law requires it, four to one, four students for one teacher.
Or less.
Or less, yeah. But we're going to be doing it three days a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, after school, one hour. We are providing transportation, and we're providing supper. And I like to say the word supper, I don't get to use that often, but supper is essentially, it's going to be a packaged meal for kids after school, which they can't take on the bus. Mike made that very clear, they can't take it on the bus. But anyway, our kids will be fed, they will be provided transportation. Ms. Herbert, to your question as it relates to the handout, within the document, you'll see a similar chart. I ran that chart at the end of last week when I sent you the report. The separate sheet is the most recent, this was run this morning, okay? Your question, Ms. Herbert, is how come the actual response rates are higher in other places?
I just looked at the high school, I mean, I looked at that, and it is really disappointing when, and I'm not mentioning names, but you had 420, you invited 427 students, and then you only got a 13.6% response. You know, I would thought that would have been higher because, again, you're going to have graduation requirements, and, you know, I was just concerned about those two high schools. You had 100% in some, you know, or 97, but that one school is way down, and I, you know, I just, I don't know what we can do to improve that, but that would be something, you know, I don't know why, I think we might want to look into that, because that's way off, and we really want to, we're trying to help our students.
Yeah.
So two factors that were at play there. One principal said that the, some parents were offended because they were invited to tutoring while they were not struggling in their current classes. And high school students traditionally, I mean, we've been doing different tutoring after school forever.
Right.
And the students start to come after they start to struggle, and we were inviting them before school had even started. So in the mind of the teenager, I'll come and ask for help when I need it, and we're trying to be proactive, obviously.
Absolutely.
So that was the dynamic. A few principals actually got some angry phone calls, how dare you, and he has an 82%. So, but we know the kids are going to continue to come at higher rates because the offer's going to be there, the teachers are going to be there. It's just the mindset of, you know, you're telling me to go to the doctor, and I'm not, I'm healthy.
That's interesting. I just.
So to Eric's point, it's not like we're not going to pick up students as we go here.
We're going to pick up a lot of students.
Out of the gate, but, right, right.
Because they're going to want to graduate.
Absolutely.
And that's one of the next, that's the third, in next steps, that's one of the pieces that I mentioned, is that this is, this is pretty malleable, this is pretty fluid. Kids are going to be found to need this, and so we want to be able to provide the access to them if we have that spot, we got to keep that ratio. But Eric's being, actually being proactive to make sure that, let's get it before it happens, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Also, there's credit recovery going on also, that will continue, that they started this summer in some cases, or kids didn't take advantage of it this summer, they, you know, they were going to take advantage of it this fall, which we're doing. But Nick, Nick can also, there on page number six, Nick's piece there as it relates to compensatory services. Again, when I ran this, it was at 276, I think the gentleman said now we're at three?
315, 315 and rising. And you'll notice there are a few sites where our numbers are lower, and that is because of staffing, we're working to secure some additional staffing. We already have the kids identified, we're just trying to get more staff to be able to work in those sites. So we're working on that, but we have got 315 locked in for starting on Tuesday.
Yep, and then finally, again, next steps, you know, we do want to continue to encourage our teachers to be utilizing that data dashboard to look at longitudinal metrics, metrics that not just were taken over the summer, but maybe end-of-year metrics if the students did participate in our assessments. We do know that, board members, we started MCAP already this year.
Right.
I mean, we're only 11 days into it. It hasn't been smooth because their platform has changed and it's different, but we have that going on. Our assessment window started September 15th for our local assessments. There's a lot of assessment going on right now, and thanks to the data dashboard, that will be found there very, very soon, as soon as completed, so teachers can be looking at the most recent contemporary metrics to drive their instruction in after-school programming. This will run until November, this will run right before Thanksgiving, we will stop through Thanksgiving and the winter break, and then we will reconvene, we will look at metrics, we will look at our local dashboard, we will see what kids that we were right about that do need the tutoring, well, you know, those types of things, and then we'll get invitations back out to them. But you can see right now, a big shout out to Mike, Kristin Ebert, and Anita, as it relates to our transportation, we have 566 kids we're going to be transporting after school in elementary, middle, and high school, getting them home, and sometimes after 5:00. So, you know, we just, we, there's a huge effort going on here. Could not do it without these folks, and these folks, and those folks. It's something pretty amazing, yeah.
Tara?
I just wanted to thank you guys very much, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you very much, I think it's incredible information, it does give us a nice snapshot of how well summer recovery was for our system and for our students. Just a couple of questions I had, I did, Mr. King, I do want to appreciate, sorry, I do appreciate you bringing to point about how some families were, might have been a little offended, and I think I even asked this question back in the summer regarding summer recovery. If a student feels they need more help, can they definitely come out and say, hey, can I get some of these services? Can I get some of this help because I don't want to fall behind?
Yes, absolutely. And that's what I meant when, although we have teachers in place, that, starting on the first day, they may only have one student come to visit them, but as unfortunately, statistically speaking, some students' grades are going to go down, or like you're speaking about, they're going to really work hard and keep getting 82s and say, I want to do better, or I certainly, I want to stay in the B range, I don't want to do worse. And so, yes, then we're going to continue to advertise, and they're going to know that this tutoring is available, and there'll be a process for them to sign up, and they'll know, and I even got an email from my own student school, what days certain subjects will be covered.
Wonderful, that's good to hear. And then I had a question regarding quarantines and assessments that we're currently doing. How are we working along aside with that? I mean, are we going to make sure the student, when they come back from quarantine, is able to make sure they get that taken care of? Are they going to be able to do it virtually through Schoolology or Google Classroom, or how's that going to work?
So the power of an assessment, obviously, is to be there next to the student, right? Not just to complete it, but to watch them do those types of things. So as far as quarantines, that's one of our limitations right now, right? We're talking about 1,000-plus students that aren't there right now to sit for a local or the MCAP assessment right now. So that is a struggle, we will, we will have to wait to get them back with us to do that. The good news is systemic local assessments have a window, right? As does MCAP, MCAP has a window also this fall. So there is some flexibility there when students can sit for the assessment, okay? Lastly, I just wanna say, I know there's a big interest out there about moving our system forward as it relates to a multi-tiered support system or RTI, we have four schools that Mr. Wernick is supporting us with also at the elementary level, Nick Shockney's facilitating that, where we're really excited about using this captive time after school to implement some Tier Two interventions, and start to, within the data dashboard, look at linear relationships between interventions and student progress efficacy here in Carroll County. We know that it's on What Works Clearinghouse and all of that, but we wanna see how it looks on our student population, and training our teachers up to be able to deliver those interventions in a captive time.
Mr. Kyler?
And I don't wanna take time this evening, but the single sheet you did?
Yes, sir.
Can you get somebody to review the high school numbers? Mrs. Herbert's question worried me, and I got looking at it, the numbers don't add up in the columns, and I think that's, I think some of the percentages are a little skewed.
Okay, we'll be happy to do it.
The yes, no, and do not responds don't add up to those invited, and if you could just review it and email it to us?
Of course, of course I can, that was a report that was sent to me today, but we'll...
I know, you said you did it quick for us, I appreciate that.
I didn't do it, but I didn't wanna say that. But no, I will, I will make sure that we cross-check it and get something more accurate, and get it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then if Mrs. Herbert's right, then I'll have to apologize to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was just concerned that some schools were low.
No, 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 I understand, but then I got, I got worried about, I got looking at it, and I thought, well, something's skewed there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's accurate now that I can.
No, no, I don't think it is.
All right, I was just, okay. Uh, Dr. Dorsey?
Yes, I was just gonna comment from the very beginning concerning the overview, just looking at those number of Fs and the data that we looked at as far as, you know, who to invite for the services. The in-person versus the virtual?
Yes, ma'am.
Is what sort of stood out to me.
Yeah, well, yeah, this was the data I shared with you guys, I think, each quarter last year.
So even for quarter four?
Yeah, and so what's interesting about that is that there was a large contingent of students that were, that stayed virtual because they were doing exceptionally well, quite honestly. And so when you looked at our local assessments, so the kids that did come back, that we were able to assess, you know, with a local assessment, they weren't illustrative of what we've typically seen, well, because a lot of our strongest kids were still at home. You know what I mean? So the averages were a little off. So it was very, very difficult to compare anything historical with last year's assessments, as you can imagine.
You also have to take into consideration that in-person was not consistent last year, so it was likely hard for students to gain that consistency when it was two days a week, and then ultimately later in the year, four days a week?
Right.
As opposed to something consistent all year.
And if students were struggling, there's probably more of an incentive to make sure they got back to school, which then would be, they were getting instruction in the actual school. I do...
I was just looking at the end.
Any other questions about that?
It looks like this is a 3% rate of the in-person, that had one or more failing grades, but 5.7 for the virtual, is that what you were referring to?
Oh, I didn't get that specifically. I just looked basically at the numbers across the board, middle, elementary through high.
Yeah, I got 11 and 16, I don't know which ones you're looking at, you looking elementary?
I was looking at elementary.
Yeah, okay, I was looking at the whole.
Yeah, across the board, really.
I would like this redone and sent to all of us, please.
Of course.
Plus, I know you spend a lot of time, because it's the quantitative data, I know that we actually look at this hard data when we look at growth and all of that, but, you know, I just think back to my visit again, and thinking of all the smiles that I saw, and all the kids who really seemed to be excited about being in school, and the teachers and assistants who seemed to be excited about being there, you know, qualitatively, you know, it just, again, helped to make it all worthwhile.
Yeah.
And if I, we'll take a look back at the updated, you know, participation for ELO that you're talking about, remember, that's gonna be changing all the time.
It was changing as of today.
Yeah, so we can give you the, we can recalculate to make sure that these percentages are correct, but they're constantly gonna be shifted.
So I think Steve Wernick actually has the most recent one that was run before we came downstairs, so we can get copies of that made.
The reason that it may not add up is because the do not respond, it's still open, we haven't closed it. So for a lot of the families that haven't responded yet, we're still allowing them to say yes or no as we begin the program. So you see a lot of the invited, you see how many said yes, how many that definitely said no, but the reason it doesn't add up is because there's a lot of zeros in the do not, did not respond, because we don't want to say, no, they're not coming, we wanna keep that open until we begin the program, to see if they're still interested.
Yeah, just, it skews the percentages, it makes the school look worse than it's doing, hopefully, because hopefully you'll get some of those, but...
Correct.
Yeah, we'll definitely get you something that's updated tomorrow. Any other questions?
Really appreciate all the work.
Mr. Anderson, are we making sure that we're not just sending out emails to those families, like letters are being mailed to them, like is...
Phone calls, lots of phone calls.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because we do hear a lot from families that they never received the email, they never, you know, saw something come across, so I just wanna make sure that we are in, trying to communicate with them any way possible that we can.
Lots of phone calls, yeah.
Yep, well done.
Anything else?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, board members.
Appreciate it. A lot in a short amount of time. Board members, we'll move on, we're having a policy development conversation, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna fully develop a policy this evening or vote on anything, it's just a iterative process, we wanted to come back, request was to have some policy development discussion regarding the board's motion to develop a new policy to keep a politically neutral stance in the classroom and the curriculum. Ed Omealy and Sidney McCabe have joined me, we're gonna review existing, we have some staff as well, we're gonna review the existing board policy, the existing administrative reg, the existing guidance on this topic, and then also provide some recommendations, considerations for the board, and certainly wanna have time for feedback, input, further discussion, so that, again, we can take that and further refine those conversations as we look to develop policy. With that, Ms. McCabe?
All right, thank you, Dr. Lockard.
I'm sorry, we might have had a question.
Well, I was just wondering, are we going to be spending more time talking about the policy piece of it, because I know at the board level, we're concerned about the policy, we set the policy. So the administrative regs, I know you and your designees set, so, I mean, if you just wanna give us a quick review, or what you're doing quickly, as far as I'm concerned, that would be okay, but, again, I just wanna get us back to our governance role in looking at the policy piece of it.
Understand, we did wanna make sure you and the public were aware that there are layers to how we implement some of these things, because the policies are very general in a lot of cases, and we thought it would just be, you know, helpful to have at least an understanding of what lies behind some of those existing policies, but I appreciate that point.
Okay, we're gonna start by going over Policy GBI in your folder, at the top, it says Political Activities of Carroll County Public Schools Employees, and you'll see Roman numerals 1 through 9. And basically, what you'll see here is that the purpose of developing the policy back in 1990 was because we had schools who were feeling pressured by candidates, political candidates, to come into classrooms and schools and be able to speak. And so that's why the policy was originally developed, and you'll see that in the purpose of the policy, and in the policy statement. It talks a lot about political campaigns, and it basically says that employees may not engage in political activity while on the job. If you go to the next sheet that we'll go over, which is the Administrative Regulations, that's a stapled packet, it says Carroll County Public Schools Administrative Regulations for Board Policy GBI, you'll see, again, that when it starts, it starts with that same intention, it starts by talking about the election cycles and the period leading up to an election, because we were responding to that pressure on the schools to have candidates speak. We did add to this, to these administrative regulations two years ago, and I'll point, I'll point out what we added when we get to it. And I won't read this to you, but I'll just summarize what each piece talks about as we go down the pages. It basically says that we don't, we don't allow schools to be forums for candidates to have an opportunity to speak, but if an outside organization, through the use of facilities, is using our buildings, they can certainly have political activity in whatever club or after-school activity that they're, that they're developing there, that would be appropriate. It also says that students can wear political buttons and shirts and campaign kinds of things, but employees may not. And then when you get down to number four, where it says Classroom Instruction and Discussion, that's the piece that we added to two years ago. This is the part that talks about the fact that teachers should not engage in political activity during instructional time, because we understand that students are a captive audience for teachers, and they need to understand that in the classroom, they must remain politically neutral. That part also says that teachers need to plan carefully when investigating political or controversial issues, and that, again, they should remain politically neutral, and that they should allow our students to see both sides of an issue, and to be able to politely disagree with one another and see all sides of an issue. I think it's important that it says there that we don't ignore issues, but that we allow students to see all sides, and that the teacher moderates that and remains neutral. It also talks about the classroom environment in number five, it says that things that are in the classroom as decoration, or anything on the walls, need to be related to the instructional goals, or the written vision or mission statement of the school, or general school information, it needs to be appropriate for the maturity level of students, and that it has to be nonpartisan and free from prejudice. It also talks about the fact that principals can remove items from a classroom that are deemed inappropriate. The next section, number six, talks about campaign literature, and that campaign literature can be distributed on school property, but it goes through all of the, all of the issues that can be related to that, like when, when the campaign literature can be distributed, the fact that someone would have to get permission from the principal, it would have to be appropriate. So there's a process that would need to be gone through in order to distribute campaign And then, finally, it talks about the fact that, number seven, employees may not use school equipment for campaign or political purposes, and that employees can support whichever political candidate they choose on their own free time. The next piece that you'll see in your packet is Guidance, Carroll County Public Schools' Guidance on Political Campaign Activity on School Property. I'm not gonna summarize this document at all, because basically, what our council did was take our policy and our administrative regulations and put them in the form of frequently asked questions. And so, this is a document that is distributed to administrators in our system, and they can use that when they get questions from staff members or from the community. It basically just takes our regs and puts it into an easy-to-read format. So, so that's what we currently have as far as politics in the classroom, political activity. And then the rest of the documents in your folder are the proposed revisions that Mr. Omealy and we started to think about as we, as we thought about what might need to be added.
And Ms. McCabe, I know that, you know, when the, you had said how the administrative regulations were updated maybe about a year or so ago, and there were supposed to be some training for teachers, and that was right as the pandemic hit, so did that training ever actually happen?
Yes, that, it happened in two ways. The principals in each school went over the new, the revised administrative regulations with their teachers during that first week back, the teachers' work week back before the students come on board, and also, we had our humanities curriculum supervisors go over the regulations as well.
Any other questions for Ms. McCabe?
Mr. Kyler?
Yeah, this is kind of a general frequently asked question kinda deal. I understand all this, now, I'm a teacher, and I have a TV in my room. Most of the mainstream media is very political. Can I have, and pick one, Fox News, CNN, whatever, can I play that to the kids when that's obviously, it's not news, it's politics? Is that violating this, or is that okay?
So, what we always tell teachers as administrators, and I know supervisors also advise teachers as well, to never just turn on the TV and have it on in a classroom, because you never know what's gonna come on the TV. It doesn't matter what channel it's on, you can't control what's coming through a live TV broadcast, so we never advise, rarely do we advise a live TV broadcast. And we also say that anything that is shown in a classroom needs to align completely with the curriculum that they're teaching. So, most of what you'll see in classrooms, if students watch any kind of video, would be a video clip that has been previewed by the teacher that supports whatever objective they're teaching in that lesson.
Mr. Omealy?
So, let me add on that with respect to the Q and A on campaign activity on school properties. I first started doing these back when Dr. Eckhart was superintendent, so this is going back almost 20 years. And the focus, if you see this, it's on campaign activity, and it's primarily focusing on that period of time leading up to an election. One of the main shifts in the proposed revisions to these regulations is to broaden the focus not just on campaign activity, but more on political activity. And so, and we've been moving in that direction, as Ms. McCabe said, over the past couple of years. You know, the school system has always taken an official posture of neutrality, that's not anything new, that's going back as long as I can remember, probably as long as anybody in this room can remember. The school system as a body is neutral, but respects the rights of individuals to be as politically active as they may choose to be. And the difference, though, is always, for employees, you gotta save that for non-duty time away from school. For kids, they have broader First Amendment rights in the schools than do the employees, and we respect that. And what we hope to do is to be facilitators, to be moderators, to be neutral, and help kids to learn how to discuss, agree, disagree, debate in a civil and respectful manner, not necessarily agreeing with somebody's viewpoints, but doing it in the kind of way that I think we, as a school system, wanna convey and teach and facilitate. And that's, that's what we're focusing on here.
And I'm glad we're focusing on that with students, because adults in the country seem to have lost the ability to do that, really just being able to have civil discourse and debate issues, you know, without it devolving into finger pointing and really, really ugly discussions.
Right.
And kids are smart, a couple past elections, I know kids that wore a political skirt to school, and they were told they weren't allowed. So the next day, about six of them had it on, and they said, you know, they can't tell us, we can't do this, but it's a shame.
Well, and I would say... Well, I, and I would say, yes, they're allowed to express the viewpoints, but within the keeping of the existing dress code.
Oh, yeah.
So, so you can't say blank candidate, right? That's not going to be allowed because of the blank, right? But you can certainly express your political viewpoints in the manner that's allowed, no obscenities, no alcohol, no tobacco, no drugs, et cetera. You know, all the things that we've had in dress codes for many, many years. So, so, you know, along those lines, you know, the shift again is away from campaigns and more on politics generally. This isn't a Republican doctrine. This isn't a Democrat doctrine. This isn't anything other than one of trying to promote civil, respectful discussion in the schools, allowing students to express their viewpoints, teachers and other employees taking a step back from their personal viewpoints and being teachers and teaching polite discourse. And that, that's the aim there.
And this is by no means meant to be, you know, like, we're not saying that this is rampant in the school system or that, you know, all teachers do this or anything, but there, there's certainly small percentages like of issues going on. So that, that's what we're looking to address. It's not like we're, you know, it's-
Sometimes innocently and sometimes intentionally.
Right.
Good point.
And again, it's not something that's, you know, at one, just at one level, but, but I mean, even beginning at elementary school, we certainly work with the students on teaching them how to analyze different perspectives. And, you know, that's a skill, you know, that we really teach the students. So again, you know, as they move forward in, let's say, some of their social studies or, or history courses, again, they can apply that skill of analyzing varying perspectives, whether they're the ones that they hold or not. And as you said, it's the actual teacher who is the mediator and facilitator of, of those type discussions.
Right.
And again, all done very civilly, you know, as we're talking about.
Well, one of the examples that I had seen, so, you know, I've had lots of parents sending me things that they're concerned with, right? Like, we saw this in, in my child's class. And a lot of it became more obvious in the virtual world where parents were seeing directly into the classroom, so to speak, right? Where they didn't necessarily see that in the past. But where you said, you know, maybe it was an innocent issue, that one of the things that was sent to me was, you know, an opinion paper at the elementary level where the teacher said, write an opinion piece explaining why Cesar Chavez is a hero. And I would say, well, that, that's not, you've already decided for the child-
Opinion.
-that they are the hero and now you just have to explain why, right? We're not teaching our kids what to think, we're trying to teach them how to think, right? So it should have been, do you think Cesar Chavez is a, is a hero and why, right? Not, why is he a hero? So that, that could be, I don't know if that's something like that is intentional or if that's accidental, but those are the kind of things that, okay, we, we need to address those, right? Because that's, that's teaching the kid what to think, not how to think critically.
So, so the teaching of political, governmental, social, controversial topics, as, as Ms. McCabe said earlier, really requires a lot of forethought by the teacher in order to develop a lesson, to, you know, plan out that assignment. I mean, I've had cases, fortunately not in this county, but in, I had a case in Charles County, went all the way to the Supreme Court on a religious issue. And had that lesson been thought out a little bit more carefully, we'd never would have had a case at all.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and, and, and that's one of the things that, that really requires some experience and some thought by the teacher and the people who supervise the teacher. And when Ms. McCabe and I were talking the other day, we said, and your sub-plans, you know, take that one step further. The teacher may have planned out a lesson, but then the substitute comes in not understanding some of the parameters that we're discussing here today and then goes off and perhaps not knowing any better. And we all know we need substitutes, but, you know, there is a risk there.
Ms. Pataglia?
Sorry.
That's okay.
She's starting to end up-
What, I know, I'm like out in, out here and just kind of like, oh, wait my turn. What are the repercussions for this not being followed? Like, if, if you have addressed an issue with one staff member and then it continues again, or a student and it continues again? What happens at that point?
So we would treat that as we would any other kind of issue with a teacher. And we would, you know, first of all, make sure that there's an awareness there and use that as a teaching moment for the employee. But then after that, if it were to continue to happen, as I said, we would, we would treat it as any other, as we would any other kind of disciplinary issue that we would deal with. Ernesto, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Lockard. No, I, I very much agree. So we would approach that in a very similar manner if it were another issue regarding another policy. Being able to tie it to a policy certainly helps in that process in employee investigation. There would be a due process, depending whether the employee chooses to bring representation from the association or not, that step would be taken. And then depending on what happens there and, and what evidence is there, there may be disciplinary action depending on the circumstances.
And all, all situations, I would say, are unique and different. You know, it could be something very minor perceived and it's discussed and, you know, and, and realized, and perhaps it could be more overt and that maybe calls for different action.
Ed?
And so let me follow up on what Mr. Diaz said. We all know, but perhaps people who are watching or in the audience may not know, is that we don't have the ability to terminate teachers and that be the end of it. Any teacher disciplinary situation is subject to one of two routes. Route number one is they have the right to a de novo review at the Maryland State Board of Education. Route two is they have the right to go to arbitration. And so, you know, we can't do a one-size-fits-all type discipline for situations like this. And as Ms. McCabe and Mr. Diaz said, you know, it's going to be measured, it's going to be progressive. At some point, if it becomes flagrant insubordination, that's one thing. And you make the case because we always have somebody who is looking at the case that we're making and has the ability to reverse. So, you know, we've had very few flagrant examples of insubordination and not so much on politics, but on other breaches of the curriculum. And I'll give one example where a teacher insisted on infusing creation science into the biology class, and that's not aligned with the curriculum. And, you know, there were a couple of discussions, you know, before, you know, the threat of more severe disciplinary action was brought to the table. That would be an example. Teachers must follow the curriculum.
Ms. Svegney?
And I, I, I agree with that. Like, I think that we want to be very specific in here about, you know, curriculum must be, you know, bias-free, right? And that teachers basically need to check their bias at the door when, when you're dealing with a, a captive audience, right? Like, free speech has its limits and that's one of them, right? Can't yell fire in a, in a crowded theater and you can't preach to a, a captive audience. But to, to Ms. Pataglia's point where she said, you know, what, what is, what would discipline look like, what would progressive discipline look like? I think I, and we haven't talked about, you know, your, your potential changes to the wording yet, Cindy, but I think one of the things that we would want to see is like a reporting and a tracking mechanism. You know, so there's a way for parents to say, or, or students to say, we saw this and we don't think this was right, right? And so a place to report it and track it. And then at that point, that's where the, and we would say progressive discipline would be associated with offenses, right? Like after, after investigation, right? So something like that. We, we wouldn't, yeah, at the policy level, we certainly wouldn't say what that would look like. That would be part of the administrative regulations. But if we say, as a, as a policy, we want to, we want there to be a mechanism for students and parents to report, that those are then tracked, investigated, and, you know, progressive discipline would ensue.
And the mechanism usually is, report it to the principal. And then there are steps from there that we know need to be taken.
But I do feel like there, there needs to be something more specific, right? Like if there's a, if there's a website or, you know, some sort of tracking mechanism that you can enter that information in so that, you know, it has been captured.
Are you talking about something that would look similar to like our fraud hotline or something like that?
That's what I'm thinking of because I know as part of the audit committee, you know, there, there's a, there's a fraud hotline and if there are ever any calls into that hotline, you review it at the audit committee. It, it'd be something similar to that. I, I'm not sure if-
I, I don't see anybody here from the union, but I think that they would have a serious concern if we had an anonymous reporting on teachers hotline.
Please don't.
No, not, not like a telephone thing, right? But, but there needs to be a way for people to say, like, this is what we saw and we need to make sure that it was addressed, right?
Call the principal.
And, and I don't think it should be anonymous.
No.
If you're going to report somebody-
No, 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 it shouldn't be anonymous.
It should not be anonymous. I mean, and again, for the people out there, I got a postcard tonight criticizing us with no name, no return address, it went in the trash. If you don't have the guts to say who you are, just shut up. And that's, but-
I agree.
But if they report, they should be responsible and be able to follow up.
Yep.
And, and the report should be, nobody should see it except you guys. You know, it shouldn't be public.
Right. And, and, and very often people need to understand that it's a one-way dialogue because thank you for your information, we'll take a look at it, but that doesn't mean we're going to report back to you, oh, we've reprimanded this teacher. We can't do that.
No, of course not, of course not. But, but people need to be able to report it without fear of, of retribution and have some semblance of understanding that it is being acted upon in some way.
Ms. Pataglia?
I, I agree with Donna. There needs to be some type of way that parents feel they can, you know, come forward with something or a student can come forward with something without repercussions because a lot of times a kid feels that they can't go to somebody and tell them what's happening or something that they saw in a classroom and then they feel like, you know, they, their grades might reflect it or something might happen to them. I, I do want to thank Mr. O'Malley for pointing out exactly what this policy is because there has been a lot of emails we've been getting that we're not going to be teaching, you know, the full history of things and we're not going to be having discussions that are of self-sensitive topics in particular classes where the curriculum does align with those topics. So I do appreciate Mr. O'Malley bringing out and saying what this policy was about because we do need to make sure the public understands, we're not trying to silence people, we're not trying to not teach our children exactly what is real, you know, what happened in the past. It's about making sure that it's neutral, that things aren't being said to a student that it, something is their fault or their ancestors' fault or, you know, just making them feel uncomfortable in a discussion that probably should not be happening in a classroom regarding a topic. So I, I do appreciate that happening, but thanks Donna for bringing that up. I think that's a, a really good point that you made.
Dr. Dorsey?
Well, because again, yes, teachers are, you know, they're, they're instructed to follow the curriculum. So that's not anything brand new, you know, as we just sort of emphasized that, yes, teach it the way it is in the curriculum, certainly remain neutral. I guess I'm, I'm struggling with the comments that have been made about reporting and, and what we're going to do now, you know, tracking everybody who says something that somebody feels is not appropriate or whatever. And again, I, I'm not sure where you are hoping to land with that. I just know, you know, as a building level administrator, you know, you always want to know what's happening in your building. And usually, even if a parent would call the superintendent's office or anybody at Central, they'd basically be given the direction, well, have you talked with the school yet? You know, and they'd be funneled back to talk with the school. And I would say most times, you know, you could get a problem or a situation resolved at the school level. So, I mean, I don't think we should come up with anything that's, that's different or out of that venue as far as having concerns voiced because who's got the most direct contact with the teacher and with the instruction other than the school administrator? So I just wanted to make those comments.
Mr. Kyler?
Yeah, and, and to piggyback that a little bit, and, and I agree with you. And again, if there were an online forum, that's probably the first place it would go is to the principal, I would think. Now, there are times where principals aren't as good as you were and they don't do it right, and then it's got to go to the next step, you know, where the principal could be the, the issue. But, and so I, I think that's a giant point. And, and I'm a firm believer in, in chain of command, you know, it's, it's a, and we've talked this before in here, if somebody comes to one of us, we go to him. We don't go to the principal, we don't go to the teacher, we go to him. And then he decides what to do and that's how it should be. And I think that's a great point. But then on your point, I think that should be emphasized tonight for everybody paying attention. It is a one-way route. I mean, we're already hearing, and you know today's world, some kid hit some kid, but the other kid did something first and we all have videos that show it. But it's still, I think, you're going to tell me in a minute, it's still not legal for us to say, well, don't worry, we did this to that kid and that to that kid. That's confidential.
Absolutely.
If something happens to a teacher, that's confidential. Now, I already heard about the, the parking spot at, at Francis Guy Key. Well, Mr. Kyler, I bet you know what happened, what happened? And I said, it's confidential. Well, do you know? I said, that's also confidential. Correct?
Yes, indeed.
And, and I don't know how we emphasize that enough is, and, and the parents, we owe it to the parents and the kids to take an action. We don't owe it to blast it on the newspapers.
Exactly.
Correct?
Correct.
Ms. Svegney, did you want to say something or you finished?
Oh, no, I, I completely agree with what Kenny was saying. I, I, I think we've seen a lot of things amping up in, in the last several months and, and the pan, pandemic has certainly exacerbated that and people are seeing it more through, through a virtual lens and, you know, digital resources have started getting used that, you know, aren't necessarily approved curriculum and poor judgment was being used. And I absolutely think that, that, I mean, principals are the ones who are ultimately accountable for what happens in their building, right? So they're the ones that should know about it and will be ultimately charged with doing something about it. But I think we need to have an idea of how often and where it's happening, right? Not, not specifics, not what discipline happened, but just, you know, kind of speci, just generally where, where it's happening and how often it's happening, right? Because I've, I've had countless parents reach out over the last couple of weeks saying that, you know, their, their kid's teacher went rogue and spent multiple, multiple class periods talking about political things, you know, like with masks and vaccines and, and things like that. We're like, that doesn't have any place in, in the classroom. So, I mean, Tyra, you had the same thing happen, right?
Unfortunately, yes. That has occurred, you know, and immediately I, you know, I notified Dr. Lockard. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, it's, you know, we understand that anxieties are high and, you know, a lot of people are confused and there's so much information coming from all different parts. But, you know, we, we need to realize that, you know, what you believe is what you believe and, 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 you know, what another person believes is what they believe. And trying to push those things onto others is just not appropriate, particularly when it does not involve the curriculum. And that's where it needs to stop, like it, that's the line. And, you know, I do appreciate you guys working on- And, you know, I do appreciate you guys working on this. You know, I mean, we're getting emails as we speak, you know, with instances that have been occurring, and again, those, those things are investigated, and that's it. There is no need to discuss them. Like, they're being investigated and handled on whatever level they need to be handled on. And, you know, it's, it's, it's tough, everyone's in a tough spot. But I do appreciate you guys doing, working on that, and again, Mr. Omeley, for, for clarifying what this is, and I appreciate that.
Dr. Lockhart?
Thank you, yeah, and just, I wanted to add to the conversation, being a former principal, if, if I have a parent who has a concern about something in my building, I wanna, I wanna know about it, because I wanna try to look into it and find out, is there a disconnect? Is there a significant issue? Is there a misunderstanding? Is there, it could be a number of things. But if I don't know about it, it's hard for me to even, you know, address or look into it, because I'm, I'm sort of in the dark. And so, you know, yes, we do oftentimes, when people call and say, I got a, I got an issue, and we say, have you, have you talked to your child's teacher, or your child's principal? I understand when people say, well, I don't, I don't want this coming back on me, or I don't want, you know, as superintendent here, that's not what I want us to be about. I, I don't want people to worry about sort of, some sort of retaliatory environment. It needs to be, you know, just like we're talking about with our students, a civil discourse, where even if we maybe can't see eye to eye, there's another step to a process somewhere, and/or we can respectfully try to, try to work through that. And I think we've got some pretty good principals out there, who, who they solve about a million problems a day. And I, I do, they, they would, we've got former ones all sitting up here, they wanna know, and they wanna be able to try to work through those issues, and try to solve some of those things, and talk to folks. And, and, and sometimes, you know, we're not perfect, so sometimes there are issues that we have to fix. And sometimes there's, there are other issues that are, like I said, maybe they're miscommunications, or misperceptions, or something to that effect. And so, if anything, I would encourage that we, we emphasize that communication. Because when I get random emails, that, that haven't gone to a, a school yet, that's the first place I'm gonna go to, is, okay, you know, so we wanna, we wanna really encourage that communication, that open communication, because I think we're, we're better that way, when we can work through issues like that.
And, Mr. Omeley, I know you've said in the past on, you know, some, a lot of teachers, I, I think a lot of this is gonna rest in training as well, right? There are a lot of teachers that come out of college, that new teachers coming out of college, saying, oh, well, you know, I think it's a good thing to be, you know, a political activist in the classroom. They don't necessarily know that, no, that's not how this works.
Right. And, and you all know, I, I teach it at, at the college level, I teach a lot of teachers. And that is very much the mindset of a lot of our younger teachers. And, you know, God love them, you know, they, they wanna be great teachers, and they think that they're coming in as change agents, and that they have broad authority, like perhaps a college professor might. And, and that message needs to be, you know, communicated to them, you know, wait a second. At your stage, you're teaching the curriculum that has been provided for you to teach, and your lesson plans have to be aligned with the curriculum. And very often, our curriculum is aligned with the Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards, you know, so there's alignment at multiple levels. And so, it's, it's not your job to kinda go off, you know, in any direction you want to. That needs to be taught, absolutely needs to be taught.
So there needs to be this outline of, this is what political activism looks like, you know, these are examples, and these are the things that should not be done in the classroom with, with a captive audience.
And, and we always say the same thing, the best thing you can do is be a role model for kids. You know, teach the lessons that have been prepared in accordance with the curriculum. Be the moderator, the, the person who allows kids to explore their own ideas, to speak their own viewpoints, but get them to do it in a way so they're not bashing each other over the head, you know, so that they're learning that very important lesson of civility.
Civility and respect, right? I mean, that's.
That's what it's all about.
That's, and, and I think that's, you know, there's been so much focus on identity politics and things like that lately, like, everything's just become so divisive, I think that there needs to be this switch towards, okay, what, what unites us, what brings us together? It's, it's our similarities that actually will, will kind of bring us all together.
Right.
And you can debate the things in a civil and respectful way.
Right. We don't cancel kids.
Right.
Ms. Pataglia?
So how, how are we coming along on that global citizenship class? Because, again, that's, you know, I keep pushing for that, because it's a wonderful course. Again, it teaches kids how to have those discussions, you know, I agree with you, thank you, I disagree with you, thank you, just learning how to, to have a good conversation without name-calling, bullying, degrading, you know? Again, that's how it should be done, before social media, I believe, that's how we functioned as a society.
Uh, Dr. Dorsey, did you wanna say one more thing?
I didn't know whether someone wanted to respond to the question.
I know, Mr. Anderson's answered this several times.
So, as I, as I shared before, we started that conversation with a, a contingent of content supervisors, directors, principals, that was prior COVID, because you had given it to me after, I guess after Mabe, is that accurate, one, one of your sessions? Coming from Anna Rundle, I'm familiar with that course. And so, that is something that I would probably like to bring to CNI, to yourself and Ms. Vigni, to have further conversation as a discussion point, to, to once again, jump into it, look at the curriculum, and see if there's still an appetite of the board to continue with that. And then if there is, and the board feels like that's a, that's a, a direction they wanna take, then we can certainly put more time and, and resources towards it.
I think it's a good, good approach, yep.
Dr. Dorsey?
I was just going to make the comment when we were talking about the new teachers. I was in a meeting recently with the supervisor of social studies, and that's one of the things that he talked about, how he has really, during the pre-service days, worked with the beginning teachers, talking with them about teaching the curriculum. If it's not in the curriculum, don't go there, but teach the curriculum. So again, you know, we are getting the message delivered, and again, it's being delivered, as Cindy had said earlier, to teachers during pre-service activities, but, you know, when you think about the new teachers, they're getting that message, that they have to teach the curriculum.
And how do we get down to more of like the lesson plan level, of things that are appropriate, and where those judgment calls get made? Because I don't think we have politically biased, any approved, politically biased curriculum, but it's where the lesson plans, and a lot of times where some of that ju- that judgment comes in, that it kind of starts to fall apart.
Yeah, we talked about this the other night in CNI, when we were talking about our health curriculum. And really, it comes down to, and, and we wanna maintain academic freedom, for instructors to be able to choose resources that they feel are aligned, right? We don't have a canned curriculum where it's lockstep page by page, and every single student's doing it, because that's part of the, the science or the art of teaching, is, is to have the right resources, anticipatory sets to grab kids. But it does come down to, the curriculum is approved by our Board of Education, and it is transparent, and it is available for everyone to see. That's where the struggle comes, is when a teacher goes in and develops their lesson, and their ability to purvey the content the way that they want to, oftentimes, not often, sometimes gets them in trouble. But we, you know, once again, it's about making good decisions in the classroom when you close the door. We wanna have discretion, we want our professionals to have discretion, but ultimately, they're the ones accountable for making that decision. This, Dr. Dorsey, also Ryan is, is a phenomenal asset that we've recently acquired for social studies, and he's spending a lot of time on civil discourse also, to your point, Ms. Vigni, and, and really teaching kids how to have the conversation, which they're not seeing a lot of models of right now.
And, and I would also add to that, you know, that's, that's the importance of training, as we mentioned earlier. We need to continue to train our teachers in how to interpret the curriculum, and develop lessons that are in alignment, and, as I said before, that's done not only by the school principal, the administrator, but it's also provided by the content-level supervisor. So we work together to make sure that teachers know how to do that, and feel comfortable being able to do that.
That's a really good point, Cindy, and, and to Cindy's point, teachers, more than ever, are very cautious right now of what they're saying, or what they're doing. So, as you can imagine, through the current climate, they're, you know, they're, they're ultra cog- you know, ultra, I guess, cognizant of, of, should I say this, should I do this? And so now they're sharing, like, we feel a bit like, like we're walking on eggshells, so we don't want that either, you know what I mean? But we do want them to be accountable, but it's, so it's, it's a fine line, we have to get our teachers confident, because confident people are good at what they do. You know, they just feel like, you know, what should we, what can we say, what can't we say?
So, board members, at this point, I know we, we wanted to briefly touch on the, the dashboard before we got to the. CIP, thank you. What's the board's pleasure? We've had a little chance to have some conversation, we said we weren't gonna be obviously voting on any policy changes. We can, we can, we've gotten some feedback from you, we can certainly come back with a, you know, another iteration, similar to, I think, what we have here as, as it relates to policy, get any feedback, continue to get any feedback, come back, come back to the board, again, if that's, if that works for.
So you're, you're giving us homework.
Well, this is the, like I said, it's an iterative process, this was sort of the first kind of conversation at it. And, and, and we, we knew we weren't gonna obviously land on a, a policy decision this evening, so.
But you, you will see in your packet, the revisions that we had, had started to propose, so that you can look, look over those.
And so perhaps, between now and the next time, there's more opportunity to kind of review that, think about additions, thoughts, feedback, et cetera, so we come back again. Mr. Omeley, that work for you?
It works, indeed.
Yeah, I think we, we heard a, you know, a couple of ideas tonight of things that we would wanna add. The, the only other thing that I didn't say yet, like, so I did see the, the revisions, the, the one thing was, we have a term, non-disruptive expression in, in the policy, and I'd say that, that's fairly subjective, so I think we might wanna try to think about what that really means. But maybe to help that along is, maybe we can start defining what we think political activism in, in the classroom, or, or in lesson plan might look like, right? Like maybe some examples of what that might look like would help with that.
So maybe if I can offer one clarification on that, in the proposed revisions to the policy, the term non-disruptive with respect to student speech comes after what teachers should be doing to allow and facilitate student expression of their own viewpoints on political issues, parties, and candidates in a respectful and non-disruptive manner. So the, the action is that of the educator, trying to facilitate the non-disruptive speech, whereas in the regulation, we talk about students having the right to engage in the non-disruptive expression of their own viewpoints, and that's of course gonna be subject to what we all know as the Tinker standard, substantial disruption, material interference, and, and we could put those specific terms in there, because, because I think you all know, and, and certainly I would say, that, that mere controversy is not enough to rise to the level of a substantial disruption, all right? And so we wanna be very, very careful not to stymie student expression of viewpoints, especially on politics, which, you know, is pretty high on the First Amendment totem pole, unless it really becomes a, a substantial or material disruption. The teachers wanna facilitate non-disruptive.
Okay. We appreciate the opportunity to begin that discussion with you.
For that information.
Thank you. And I know, Ms. Herbert, we did spend a couple minutes on the joint work session with the commissioners right out of the gate, talking a little bit about our dashboard, but I wanted to.
Yes.
See if there's any.
Yes, we need some clarification, and as you stated with the commissioners, the first date on the dashboard, we wanted to make sure that everyone realizes that not one of those students, or teachers, employees had ever stepped foot in any of our buildings. So, and I think people thought we had 91 students that first day.
On day one, right.
On, on day one. And there is a lot of misinterpretation of quarantining, we've had doctors say, you've got your, your results back, you're negative, you can go back to school, and then we have, and then they're saying, no, you have, you have to still stay home three more days, and I just, people need clarification, but I also wanna say, ourselves, as a board, we've been having difficulty getting answers from the state. And I called for a meeting next Wednesday with our board, Dr. Lockhart, Ed Singer, and also heads of the State Department, such as the Health Department, Dr. Chan, Dr. Webster. We, we need some clarification. I've been talking to the delegation, and it's very true, we're doing a lot of finger-pointing. He said, she said, they can do that all day, but it's affecting our students. We want our students in class, we want them, if they are not ill, to be in class, and it looks like, and we've got a lot of co- of comeback from parents, my child's not sick, my child does not have a fever, why can't my child go back to school after I have had my COVID test? Take it away, Dr. Lockhart, because we have got to get to the bottom of this, and that's why I called a meeting. You can read whatever you have in the newspaper, there's misinformation all around, and we've got to get this cleaned up, so that the public understands what the rules are, or the mandates are, or the guidelines.
Right. So we have, you know, look, in eight minutes, I'm not gonna be able to go through the, the COVID protocols with you, but, you know, they're essentially what we had in place all of last year, but the, the, the factor that's, that's very challenging is the quarantine process, for all the reasons you just said, right? And so we're, I said this to the commissioners at the beginning of this afternoon's sessions, you know, we need to, we need to work with Maryland Department of Health, and whoever else, to have some conversation about how can we truly achieve our goal of keeping kids in school consistently and safely, and safely. That, that's not gonna go away, that's still at the, at the crux of what we're, what we're trying to do here, but we are currently, with the protocol we're required to follow, having to send a lot of kids home because of the close-contact component, and that's not indigenous to just Carroll County. I talk to my colleagues across the state all the time, and this is a significant concern. And so, I appreciate the fact that we're gonna have a chance to really unpack that next Wednesday night, get ready, Mr. Streaker. And by the way, I just wanna say thank you publicly to Carl Streaker, who, along with the directors and Cindy, and they deal non-stop with these issues. So you can imagine what it's like at the school level for our administrators and our nurses, and, and that's a signi- that's a significant strain on, on our, on our schools right now. And we don't wanna unnecessarily quarantine anybody, and we wanna keep as many people as we can in school, but we can't sustain, you know, 1,300, 1,500, you name the number it is.
And we've got a lot of healthy students out there.
Right. And so we're looking for ideas, answers, possibilities, suggestions, flexibility, changes, whatever that might be, that keeps a safe environment. We don't want big outbreaks in our schools, we don't want unnecessary sickness, that's for sure, but we want, we do want consistency for our, our students. And it is a significant disruption in people's lives when they get that call. I was reading one of the local articles about somebody saying. I was reading one of the local articles about somebody saying, ah, every time the phone rings, I'm thinking, oh, you know, I gotta go get my kid, they gotta be quarantined. And life kind of stops for people, especially with younger kids. I understand and appreciate all of the safety concerns around all this. So I don't want these comments to be misconstrued as, you know, we don't want to follow any kind of safety standards. That's not it at all. I think we need to collectively come together and say, okay, how can we continue to be safe, but at the same time also not have such inconsistencies with kids having to be out of our schools?
Absolutely. Ms. Sebigny.
And Ms. Herbert and Dr. Lockard, I want to thank you for, for bringing this up tonight. I, I know there's so much misinformation and so much misleading comments and stuff out in the public and especially the.
So true.
Especially those 91 positive cases the first week. They, they were not the first week of school. They were all prior to school starting. They were just people who happened to have been, who would have been showing up on the first day of school who didn't because they were positive.
Which were included in then the next week.
Right. And, and we're showing cumulative numbers, not, you know, of, of all active cases, not new cases this week. And so we actually had lower numbers of outbreaks in the school system for the first week while we had no masks than other school systems in the state, right? It was actually after masks came on that we had more outbreaks. But like the, but this is a, but the real problem are the quarantining rules. And that's where we really need to start focusing. And I'm glad to hear, Dr. Lockard, that you're having this meeting with the, the rest of the superintendents around the state and Dr. Shodri because like, we need to know like, what are, what are possible avenues? Like our, our staff are dying on the vine in order to try to do this line tracing of the quarantines. And effectively all we're doing is quarantining healthy kids, right? All of these kids are coming back and having, having never gotten sick, you know, and we're up to, it was, you know, the number was 1,200, now I think it's getting close to 2,000 kids, right?
I, I hope it's not 2,000. I know it was 1,200 quarantines and then you add the, the COVID positives onto that, it's like 1,400. But, and we are going to add that quarantine number to our dashboard, so that, that will be there. We want to be as, you know, transparent with that, that number as well. But it's, it is a significant, significant challenge for our, for everybody, students, families, staff.
So, Dr. Lockard, is it possible for us to say, so staff is struggling right now with all the, the line tracing, right? That, that's a significant part of it. So a test to stay program wouldn't help, right? Because you still have to do the same amount of line tracing.
A test to stay program would be great if it came with not only all the free kits, but.
But people to administer them.
Somebody to administer it.
Right.
Because let's just, I mean, I'm just going to give you an example. If we, if we went that route, I'd be all for it if we had the human resource to support it. In other words, if Marcia's a close contact in a school, we would say, well, you get to stay if you test for the next four or five days with a rapid test negative. You do that, you come. You do that, you come. You do that, you come. You're fine. There, we're not excluding, not, she was a close contact, but not COVID positive. The, the challenge for us is, is our nurses are running around, contact tracing, making phone calls. And they also are there to administer medications and oversee the health of the school in, there's, you know, it's, they have big jobs in addition to all this other stuff that got dumped on them. And there's a ton of record keeping that comes with this, not as simple as I'm just going to give you a nasal swab and off you go. Don't forget, in, in one school, you might have 60 kids that need to come in and do that every morning if you're testing and staying because you've been a close contact. And then there's also required paperwork and they have to enter it into a system and account for it, so we're.
And you have to get parent permission. And so then the nurse is always having to go through, can I test this student? Can't I test this student? And as Dr. Lockard said, there is a lot of paperwork and follow-up that goes along with every single test that we would have to give, that we would give.
There's also some surveillance training. And I know the state has offered, hey, we can provide and connect you with a vendor for some surveillance training. But Carl, those are PCR models, right? So that's not really a test and stay model. That's just a, more of randomized samples of surveillance, correct?
There are different models for surveillance testing, but, but conceptually they, they can be PCR or rapid. The concept is to sample students and, and our challenge that we would foresee with that, we don't generally have a testing problem. We have the, we've stood up the testing site at Westminster High. If we had a surveillance testing, every time one of those students would be positive, we would then initiate all of our contact tracing protocols again. So, you know, like we, we could foresee a student testing, like as your example, Dr. Lockard, you test negative today, Ms. Herbert tests positive, you're a close contact. And although you're negative today, if we don't have a test and stay, which is not in place right now as an option, now I'm calling Dr. Lockard's family and saying, you have to go home. And he's saying, but I just tested negative. That would add a significant frustration among our families and, and the workload and, and you know, so that's what some of the surveillance, you know, that's the potential result of, of surveillance and screening as well as parent permissions that have to be in place and whatnot. So these are significant challenges.
Even if you do a test and stay, every time a, a new student tests positive, then you have to go through all the contact tracing and communication with families again.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that, you know, they've stated that we, we did not accept this and we did not accept that from the state, but there's a reason. We need personnel. You can give us all the free test kits you want, but if we don't have somebody that is there to maintain, give the, give, give them their, their test and then you've got paperwork to do and then it's not a five-minute thing of paperwork. So my question is, for these poor nurses that we are so thankful for, are they being told by the state or the county that they have to do the tracing and the, the contact tracing and the line tracing? Who's telling them to do that?
That's our responsibility.
That's our responsibility.
From, from a school perspective. Now, just to be clear, the administrators, the teachers, the instructional assistants, the bus drivers are where we get the information to develop the line list. The nurse is unaware who the student was next to. So they asked, so this is kind of what happens, a student presents positive, we learn of a positive case, then the nurse lets the staff know. The staff, the administrators often take the lead on this and then they're identifying who those students are, working with the personnel I just mentioned. And then the nurse is creating a line list to enter into the state and those students are then quarantined. And then often these students are getting quarantined and then many of them are trying, you know, getting their test on day five to return. And we've had some outbreaks in the county because some of those kids have ended up being positive. And, and then if they're positive, then we re-initiate on those cases.
And I'm glad you said something and I am going to have to leave. But I will say that I've gotten calls from bus, even bus drivers.
Yes, ma'am.
And the parents are on them about if they're late or there's a child in the backseat with their mask down and they can't see the third grader back there. So we just.
And I would say, you know, I think what's important to keep in mind is that even before COVID, our nurses were overwhelmed.
Absolutely.
Overwhelmed with their regular duties. You know, they are distributing medications during the day. Some of our nurses are providing tube feeding and other kinds of, of intensive care that our students require. And so all of the COVID responsibilities that are placed on, on top of the regular responsibilities and when you add on to it, the length of time that this has gone on, you know, it's, it becomes exhausting.
Well, I think we have plenty of lively discussion lined up for Wednesday and we'll continue with these, with these conversations, right?
Kenny?
Yeah.
Short and sweet.
Yeah, I'll be quick. A, the staff and O, everybody's extended. There's a lot of people that want, and I want us to be transparent, there's a lot of people want, reports more often, reports whatever, nicely put, they don't know how to analyze a report. They're, they're posting all day to day, we're positively the worst county in the state, this isn't a statewide problem, this was a mask issue, blah, blah, blah. They can hate us, I don't care. We need to solve the problem and to solve problems statewide. My biggest concern, and I love that you're putting quarantines on the dashboard now, but as far as reporting more often or doing whatever, that's the same people getting that data together that are already overworked on this other stuff. We're being transparent. Most of them only want the numbers to try to ridicule everybody. If it doesn't fix the problem, I want everybody working on fixing the problem, not, not trying to create a number bank and do whatever. I think we owe it to our staff to make sure we do that. And, and anything that can be done to minimize, and I know that the quarantine that we have to do isn't our idea. It's put down on us and that's what you're working on is trying to make that more common sense. Our cases aren't outrageous. There's going to be cases. I mean, COVID, the cold, the flu, et cetera, et cetera, that's all COVID. It's not going to go away. There's going to be COVID next year. We, when, when we were 50% absentee rate in flu, we didn't close a school, you know, and, and somehow we need to.
That's true.
We need to keep the kids in school and, and I'm done, but.
Dr. Dorsey?
I just wanted to share, I know it's been a lot of stress and strain on the staff and again, you know, we appreciate all the efforts and I know nurses are overwhelmed. In fact, there were times you would have to beg the nurses to take their lunch breaks. In fact, you had to schedule a lunch break and just shoo them away so that they could take those 30 minutes to have their lunch. But I just wanted to speak on behalf of the students who are put in quarantine. You know, in most cases, they're finding out sometimes late, the night before school is supposed to start and, you know, the kids are upset, they're disappointed, they're hurt and they're fearful, thinking, okay, maybe I, I will have this, this disease. But again, it's, it's just a strain, I know, on the students and on their families. So thanks for putting it on the agenda and I know we've shared some thoughts tonight, but we do have to move forward with having this discussion.
Donna, final thoughts?
Oh no, I was just going to say there, there's lots of studies coming out now from LA school systems where they're doing hundreds of thousands of tests and they're actually finding out that the rate of new cases in quarantined kids is lower than the number of cases in vaccinated teachers. So I, you know, and, and our, like, we're, we're creating this massive problem with quarantines and it's, it's like, so the, the students are disappointed and we've got tens of thousands of students across the state that are healthy that are at home. And it's like, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? We need relief, we need relief now. And I'm really glad and hopeful that there are fruitful discussions tomorrow. So, thank you.
We need students.
Right. We need students in school.
That's it?
Yes, and good luck tomorrow. And I'm going to leave and be with my family.
Okay.
Our best to your family, Marcia.
Thank you.
Yes. Board members, we have a CIP hearing scheduled that we will go ahead and, and move right into if that's okay with you. Each year when we present the, the CIP, the capital budget and the, and the CIP program request at the September board meeting, prior to it, coming back to the October board meeting, we have a public hearing. This is a chance for us to hear any input. Ms. Gaddis, I don't know, we'll compile anything we received electronically and make sure the board members get that. Mr. Kane typically does a very brief, I think it's like four slides maybe, five slides overview. And then if we do have anybody here who signed up for public comment on the CIP, this is a CIP public hearing. We're welcome to do that. So, Mr. Kane, you know, you can come sit at the table and whatever's easiest for you. And then, do we have his slides?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
This is, as Dr. Lockard said, this is a pretty short and sweet presentation, just a summary of the fiscal year 2023 capital budget and fiscal years 2024 through 2028 capital improvement program requests that goes to both the state and county governments for funding. It is part of, you know, this is an annual process that really begins with the development of educational facilities master plan that is presented to the board in May and then approved in June. The, the educational facility master plan is a 10-year look at facility needs. The CIP is the six-year funding plan for how to fund those projects. We are currently in September where it was presented to the board at the September board meeting, we're at the public hearing. It is scheduled to go back to the board at their October meeting for approval. Once the board approves the request, then it will get submitted to both the county and state. And then the, both the state and county, their processes begin in the winter and culminate next May with the adoption of the county budget and the interagency commission on school constructions, approval of state projects in May, which again, begins the next cycle of the facilities master plan. So it's a continuous cycle that is done annually. So, next slide. The focus of this year's request is kind of a continuation of, of the last year's in that the two major projects, Career and Technology Center and East Middle Replacement are, one is underway and one is scheduled to begin construction hopefully in, in about a, well, in, in a matter of weeks in October sometime. But the request really is for the next round of state funding for Career and Tech and, and East Middle and then also some additional local funding for East Middle, the East Middle Replacement Project. In addition to those two major projects, there are several roof replacements and HVAC system replacement projects that are in the six-year plan. There is in the very out year of the six-year plan, another modernization, so that would be another large project. It is towards the end of the six years and that's a modernization of William Winchester Elementary. And then additionally, there are some small addition projects that are included for, the four remaining elementary schools that did not receive kindergarten additions. And then there's a elementary special ed program, the BEST program at Robert Moten, we're looking to add some classrooms to that school too because of the growing needs at Robert Moten. Next slide. As far as the dollar amounts, the, the fiscal year 2023 budget request to the county is About half of that, well, no, I'm sorry, about a third of that is the additional funding for East Middle. And then there are monies for some of those systemic projects that we talked about, a roof replacement at North Carroll Middle and a HVAC replacement at Oklahoma Road. The local portion of those projects is in there. And then there's some annual requests, you know, money for paving and technology that are included in the local requests. And then the state request would be $19,370,000. The majority of that is for continuing construction funding for Career and Tech project and then the remaining funding for the East Middle project. And then there would be also a couple of systemic projects of the Spring Garden HVAC replacement, we're asking for the, the state share of that project so we can move that project forward. And then two window replacement projects at South Carroll High and, and Westminster High. So the total request for the 23 capital budget as it stands currently is, is $35,987,000. So again, it goes back to the board for the board to approve in October and then that would get submitted to both the state and county. The out years.
One question on that, the HVAC, and of course we need some HVAC stuff anyway, but that's also tied to, you need to follow up with a roof behind that, which is part of the timing, correct?
We, we generally do time, try to time an HVAC project, especially if there are rooftop units on, on the roof. We, we like to do the HVAC replacement before we do the roof, you know, it, you know, makes sense. You don't want to put a new roof on and then have the.
Yeah, exactly.
Have the roof torn up by the contractors that are taking the rooftop units off.
Thanks.
So, right. The out year, the, the fiscal year 2024 through 2028, the, the total request is 188 million. The out year, the, the fiscal year 2024 through 2028, the, the total request is $188,141,000. About, you know, it's, it's about an equal split of what we're asking from the state over the next future five years and, and the county, just to give you an idea of ballpark of how much, you know, is in the plan. And then my final slide really kind of gives you a picture of, we use something called Facilities Condition Index, or FCI. It's tied to the board's strategic plan, it's one of the objectives is to maintain kind of that same level, the, the same condition of schools. This slide gives you just a picture, shows, you know, fiscal year '21 and '22, it shows how much we had, you know, we, we use a program called Capital Forecast in, in SchoolDude, it's a software program we use. It projects how much we would need to replace, and then the blue bars are what we actually received. And you can see that based on doing those two major projects at East Middle and Career and Tech, that the FCI score is coming down from 35 to 34% to 32%. What you'll note is, as, as those projects complete and we get back to just doing some roof replacements and, and a few HVAC replacements, that the FCI score does start to increase again. But towards the end of the six-year window, if we were to do that William Winchester modernization, which again is a larger project, it, it then would come back down up from 38% to 37 after the six-year window. So really, this chart kind of shows you that with, with 40 schools and the amount of inventory we have, there is a significant amount of investment that needs to occur just to maintain the condition of the buildings that, that are in the school system.
And Mr. Kane, I think that we, we had talked about that maybe two or three years ago when we were working on the strategic plan, that it looked like you would need a steady infusion of about $44 million each year for CIP in order to keep that, that FCI factor flat, which is really what we're, we're striving for, right?
Correct, yes.
But if you look at what we've got in the plans over the next six years, it looks like it's about 35 on average per year. So we're, we're coming up short, right? Which is why that, that number is going to...
Right. And, and part of, part of that is what goes into this, or has gone into this, is somewhat working with the local side and the state side on what funding is actually, you know, we are still asking for more than, based on what their past funding is, more than we probably are going to receive, but we, we haven't gone there where we have said, okay, you know, we're going to put 44, it might be up to, close to 50 million a year now because we've recognized that the funding partners probably can't get there at this point. But it is a conversation, I know that we've talked about having several times, that at some point, we're going to have to have a, a larger conversation, you know, with both boards have talked about that, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of level-setting the expectations with, with the commissioners, right? I mean, this is, this is what it would take to not have a declining index for facilities.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Do we have any citizens here for public comment on the CIP this evening? Okay. Hearing none. I did have Ms. Gaddis, she will tomorrow go ahead and accumulate, we did get some feedback in the, in the email version, so we'll tabulate that and make sure board members have that. And with that, this is just a public hearing, so with that, that, that concludes the public hearing. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.